25th, 2019, and it's 5:15, and the Carroll City Council Meeting is now in session. Will everyone please rise for the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Please note everyone's attendance, except Councilman Fleischner, probably here a little bit. Our first item this evening is the consent agenda, which is approval of minutes of the March 11th meeting, approval of bills and claims. Under licenses and permits, we have the renewal of a Class C liquor license with Sunday sales, Carroll Moose Lodge #273, renewal of a Class C liquor license with Brew Pub and Sunday Sales, Carroll Brewing Company, renewal of a Class C native wine with outdoor service, Santa Maria Vineyard and Winery. We also have an appointment to commission. It's the Region 12 RPA Tech Appointment, it's Randy Kroll, annual appointment, and Kerry Promise is the alternate. And then we also have approval of in-car and body worn camera purchases, that's for the Police Department. Are there any questions with regards to the consent agenda? If not, I'll need a motion to approve the consent agenda. So move. We have a motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote.
Seaman?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Cotts?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. The next item, oral requests and communications from the audience on things not on the agenda? Seeing none, we're going to go past ordinances because we have none. Our first resolution is the Public Works Contract, and Mike, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Negotiations with the Teamsters Local Union, 238, the Public Works Union, has completed and resulted in a four-year contract that starts July 1 of 2019 and runs through June 30 of 2023. The June 30, 2023 expiration also would coincide with the current police union contract expiration date. Overall, I believe that this is a very fair agreement for all parties that are concerned and also places the city of Carroll, I believe, in a very good position long-term. In particular, with revisions made to Iowa Code Chapter 20 related to collective bargaining in early 2017, there were a number of items that were moved into the prohibited topics requiring them to be removed from the Public Works Contract that included dues checked off, health insurance, leave of absence, and contract automatic renewals. Additionally, starting July 1 of 2019, the police union contract also allowed that the health insurance plan design can be set by the City Council. So long-term, that will give the Council the ability to make plan designs changes, especially in those years where we may be facing large increase in health insurance premiums. The proposed contract does include a 3% annual adjustment to the top of wage ranges for each of the four years of the contract, with one exception for the secretary and library worker position. The current non-union secretary rate was taken, and then 3% was added to that for July 1 of 2019, which effectively makes that first year 3.1% increase. I'm happy to answer any questions about the contract or overall. Otherwise, staff's recommendation as the Mayor and City Council consider approval of a resolution for the Public Works Contract beginning July 1, 2019, including June 30, 2023, and authorize that the Mayor and City Manager sign the contract. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions that the Council has.
Just a statement, I was glad to see that we were able to get them all under our rules, regulations for the city, and that we're all sitting underneath our personnel policies, yeah. In that way, it's, we kind of have more control over that. Any other questions for Mike?
No, I just want to thank him for, I asked who went through the entire personnel policy document, and he said he worked long hours on it, and he did a great job. It's been a long time since all of that was updated and that get it in sync with state and federal regulations. It was, it's a great document, I'm sorry.
No, and thank you for that, and really I have to also give thanks to the department heads. I mean, they all went through it, and they took a lot of time to go through it, I mean, so I appreciate their comments.
Oh, that is great, thank you.
Yeah, that was a lot to go over. Any other questions for Mike? If not, I'll need a motion to approve the resolution for the Public Works Contract beginning July 1, 2019, and concluding June 30, 2023, and authorize the Mayor and City Manager to sign the contract. So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. There's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote.
Cotts?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is the revised policy 400 personnel policies, along with deleting the policy 401, Salary Administration, and the revised policy 901, Safety Policy. And Mike, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council, as was kind of indicated, with the new Public Works Union Collective Bargaining Agreement, a number of items were removed from the Public Works Contract that now need to be put in our overall city, our policy, personnel policy. In fact, the old contract itself was 26 pages long, and the new contract is actually two plus a cover page. So due to this, it was important to take a number of these items and move them to our personnel policy. In the end, this really did become a major revision to the personnel policy, and to this, due to this, we took the opportunity to make additional revisions. And I would kind of categorize those into three categories. The first was to add our current practices to the overall personnel policy. Second was to bring our personnel policy in compliance with current federal and state code. And the third would be to clean up some grammar and other language issues. Included in the packet was a redline version of the personnel policy. I'm not going to go through it all because it really did affect nearly every page of the personnel policy. And of course, if there's any specific questions, I'd be happy to answer those questions. With that, staff is recommending the Council review and consider approval of a revised policy 400 personnel policy, revised 901 safety policy, along with deleting policy 401 Salary Administration. I'd be happy to answer any questions the Council has.
Just real quick, genetic information, is that something federal-state, or is that something, I've never heard of that on the court?
That's a federal law.
In regards to genetic information of him in that discrimination thing? Is that, I've just never seen that before.
That's federal, Mike? Yeah, that's federal, yeah.
Oh, and then I think there was some discussion in some of the stuff about the sharing of vacation time. That's not something.
No, I mean, there was a request from the Public Works Union to consider that, and that was not included in it.
Not included, okay, that's what I couldn't find it. Well, and then in the resolving disagreements, I just had a, where do the public union employees go? If they have resolutions, does that come to you?
So, the police union would follow what is in the Police Department's contract.
Right.
So they have a grievance procedure that goes through, prado is police chief, it can be appealed to City Manager. After that, they would have the option to go to, I don't know if they can go to, I know they can go to arbitration. I don't know if there's mediation in there, there may or may not, I don't remember that off the top. But there's, it's spelled out in their contract.
And the public union has it?
The police.
Yeah, but the, the Public Works does not have one.
That defaults now back.
Back to ours, okay, all right. All right, that was it.
Hey Mike, just out of curiosity, so what's the mechanism of getting all the employees up to date? Do they get new manuals, or?
So our intention would be, if this is approved tonight, we will actually print new personnel policies for every staff member, and then they'll be asked to sign off that they received a copy of that, and that will be placed on the personnel policy. So we will distribute this out to everyone.
Very good, thank you.
Any other questions for Mike? If not, I need a motion to approve the revised policy 400, which is the personnel policies, revision of policy 901, which is the safety policy, and deleting of policy 401, Salary Administration. So move.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Base?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Cotts?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. The next item is Street Resurfacing 2019, Report of Proposal Opening and Award Contract, and Randy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On March 14, proposals for the construction of the street resurfacing project for this summer were received and tabulated. Three proposals were received, their detailed summaries included in your information. TenPoint Construction Company was the lowest responsive bidder at $928,994.54. With that bid, low bid, the currently estimated project cost is $1,041,094, excuse me, $94.54. The budget currently has identified funding in the amount of one, just over $1.5 billion. So depending on where this contract ends up, in the end, some of that money may be recommended to be allocated to future street resurfacing projects.
How soon, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
Unless there are any questions, I just recommend approval of the resolution awarding the contract to TenPoint Construction Company at their bid price.
Do you know when they're going to start?
They have indicated they would like to start as early as practical on the project. We have not had, of course, a pre-construction meeting yet to get a schedule, but their verbal indication was early this season.
So, I was trying to remember, was it, they want to start before school's out? So that means they'll be done before school starts?
Yes, we are hoping that's the case.
All right. Any other questions?
Just a comment. Randy, thank you for going through this process again. I know we went through this last year, and the bids came back high, and now this year we've got some good bids that were in budget, but I appreciate the time, effort, and energy it went into it. Made a big difference.
Well, it has to do with the timing of the availability of the product too, doesn't it?
There's a lot of factors apparently are involved in this, in bidding like this, and we were quite unfortunate last year to end up with only one bid, and it was high compared to the engineer's estimate. And this year, there was a lot of aggressive effort by these three contractors to get a bid to us, and, you know, we certainly appreciate that, and we let them know that at the time of bid opening, that, you know, we appreciate that attention to the City of Carroll projects.
So if we delay this, the numbers we're seeing here now will be escalated?
In all practicality, it would. The indication, verbal indication for an early start, well, we seem to be an early start because we're usually last, but part of that was reflected in their bid, that they could give us a better bid if they could get an early start. So, you know, we'll work with them as much as practical to make that happen.
Any other questions for Randy? If not, I need a motion to approve the resolution awarding the contract for the street resurfacing 2019 project to TenPoint Construction at their bid price of $928,994.54. So move, second. There's a motion and a second, any other discussion? We'll go ahead and vote, please.
Cotts?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. The last resolution is the wastewater treatment plant disinfection improvement, report of the proposal opening and order of contracts, and Randy, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On March 19, proposals for the construction of the wastewater treatment plant disinfection improvements were received and opened. Six proposals were received, and a detailed summary is also attached to the information provided. Woodruff Construction of Ames, Port Dogenes, submitted the lowest responsive proposal at $967,530. That does exceed the engineer's estimate of $750,000. There may be several reasons for that. A couple that are identifiable are, there were several calls during the bidding period regarding groundwater conditions at the wastewater treatment plant. And we believe that some of the bidders reflected their uncertainty of groundwater conditions in their bid. The other is, apparently there is a lot of wastewater work out on the market right now. And we were really fortunate to get six good bidders, but there apparently is a lot of work out there that they could perform in the alternate as opposed to this project. So a couple of reasons, rationalizations, whatever they may be. The three lowest bidders, in fact, the four, were really grouped around a low number, actually higher than the engineer's estimate, but they were grouped together. So we believe that that would say this is the market price of doing the work that we need done on this project. And based on that bid, the total project cost becomes $1,054,730. The current budget and the approved budget for next year have identified about $822,700 in total funding. We will recommend, as that next year's budget is reestimated, that the funding for this project, for the complete project, be allocated from the Sewer Utility Fund reserves at that time. And it's, this project is, again, is scheduled for substantial completion, March 1 of 2020. We do have a compliance deadline with the DNR of April 1 of 2020. So the contract requires that we be disinfecting sewage by March 1, so we'll have a full month to work out any bugs in the system. Unless there are any questions, I'd recommend award of the contract to Woodruff Construction at their bid price.
What are you meaning by bugs?
Just in case any bugs get into the system.
I'm expecting bugs to get into.
Probably more likely electrical bugs.
Oh, that was okay, all right, just to make sure.
Germ ones must be there, right?
Bugs are going in that thing.
They shouldn't be gone by the time we get here. If not, this will kill them.
That's what I'm hoping for. Had you looked at these, Woodruff, are you pretty familiar with them?
They have bid for the city before.
Okay.
I don't recall they've ever received, getting a contract. Now, Vanser and Kim was present at the bid opening, and they actually said, out of the six, I believe, they said they had five under contract with V and K projects in different cities, and Woodruff had two of them. So, all of the bidders appear to be just very responsible bidders. And V and K has had experience with them. We have had Erickson built the plant 14 years ago, and Grunman Hicks, we had under contract to do the water treatment plant filter rehab here a couple of years ago. So we're familiar with a few of them.
Very good.
And of course, King Construction, they're local, they do a lot of work in Carroll.
Right.
All these bids were within 6% from top to bottom, you tell you.
It is.
Any other questions for Randy?
Don't suppose we can wait until there's plus work being done so it costs less, can we?
Well, with an April 1 deadline with the DNR, that's kind of our, you know, the driving endpoint, that we do have to get there. Now, as far as rebidding this project, normally even over the period of two construction seasons, there, a rebid isn't usually in the best interest. More likely, you'd get considerably fewer bids on it, for one thing. The only thing that would make it more attractive is if it changed, if the specification changed or plan changed in some manner. Now, in this project, is there something that you want to remove to make this a different project, to get different bids on it? And that certainly can be done. There isn't too much fluff in this project. It's kind of a basic disinfection project. That's about all it is, you know. We did say we put in effluent flow monitoring, which wasn't a specific DNR requirement, but it's a good operational procedure, and the DNR is leaning toward the requirements for effluent flow monitoring. So do we take it out, build it later, standalone? You know, that's expensive too. This building had, or, excuse me, this project has a building over the disinfection units to house and, you know, keep out the weather, keep the electrical out of the weather, everything. And we believe that's in the best interest of that process, but it's not absolutely necessary. There are plants right through our Midwest area that have disinfection facilities that sit out in the elements. So that's, that would be a major change in project. And of course, the engineer's estimate would have been lower, and certainly the bids would have been lower without building. But we believe a building is in the best interest of protecting your equipment long-term out there.
So if we volunteer, Councilman Haley, climb through the discharge tubes, put the disinfection rods in? Would that lower it?
That probably could allow.
If you can fit me in there, Mike.
With that, is there any more questions for Randy? If not, I'll need a motion to approve the resolution awarding the contract for the wastewater treatment plant disinfection improvements project to Woodruff Woodruff Construction LLC at their bid price of $967,530. So move, second. I'll take the second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? If not, we'll go ahead and vote, please.
Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Cotts?
Yes.
Fleischner?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. The next item is under reports, the 2019 Community Development Block Grant, Owner Occupied Housing Rehab Grant, and Laura, when you're ready.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We actually have Carla Janic here with Region 12 to discuss this further. But this is a continuation of the last discussion that we had, this is another step. And we will have some more steps outlined in the memo that will be coming up right before the grant is due, but we wanted to take care of this step tonight, so I'll let Carla kind of talk about what we're doing.
All right, thank you for having me.
Thanks for coming, Carla.
Can everybody hear me? Just as long as we can get to there, okay? Part of your CPPT block grant will be a city local match contribution. In years past, that was, to receive your maximum points, it would be approximately $10 per person, which had a little over $10,000, would have put you at $100 grand for match, not a real attractive deal for the city of Carroll. They have taken that out, and now it just kind of goes under your community involvement and your community support. So this is where you need to decide how much you want to give so you look good without breaking the budget. My recommendation for the city of Carroll would be, at the minimum, $1,000 per project. Based off your applications that we received in March, we have four confirmed applications and five more what we're going to call Tier Two, because they didn't get everything in by the due date, but we're sure going to keep them in that Tier Two. I would suggest at this point, when I did the math on your points, is to go for a five-project application at this point. Typically, what I like to do is that gains the most points on application. I turn around and I bet them all in the first year, and I have two more years to go scrounge some more projects for you. In early, we did four, and we ended up doing six. In Manila, we asked for six, and we're doing nine. So you kind of see the trend going, we did four in Auburn, and now we're doing six. So that's where I think your sweet spot to maximize points are. Another thing that I recommended to Mike and to Laura is if there were any other agencies that give them, and I don't care if they're $50 or $100, it just shows a community support instead of just the city. And I think Mike is working with a couple agencies on that. So that's fantastic. So the discussion tonight here is really, where do you want to be in that $1,000 to $2,500 range for your budget? Now, what you will get, just so you know, with the five projects, if awarded, that would put $187,000 worth of money into that target area. So if you're looking at percentages of return on your money, if you went in at $2,000, that would be a $10,000 contribution for $187. So a pretty good return on your money there. But that's really up to you guys to decide where you want to be. Any questions about match or your application in general for me at this point?
What'd the other cities do for their match?
Most of my other cities are not as large as you. I have cities from Coon Rapids to Auburn, Guthrie Center, Scranton. Jefferson went in at $3,800, and they were my highest scoring project that year. And that was per project, and they did six, but they got to do more applications. We have small towns giving anywhere from $500 to $2,000. I mean, it is just all over the board. But looking at previous applications that we were awarded, four out of four last year, four out of five the year before, I think that I would stick in that sweet spot. If you choose to go high like Jefferson did, that's just going to make it look a little better, but I don't know if it's completely necessary. What we do with that city match is we use it for the lead reduction rehab, which will usually allow us to get a little bit more in the siding to replace those old wooden sided houses or fascias or the windows. And with each project, if we're able to save a little off the 24/9 and the 7001, it just goes back into the city savings account, and I can usually eke out another project by adding some of my other grant funds to it, again.
So it's the same amount of grant fund money, you're just going to get a yes or no from them? You're not going to get, if we give less, we won't get less grant money? Is that my correct with that?
What it does is it goes into your scoring for your community support. So in that five points, where you're going after the points.
Right. But the amount of money we're going after will not change?
Correct. Correct.
We've done a couple of these in the past.
You've done some similar ones, you've done some down payment assistance in the past, but not really just this Community Development Block Grant, which addresses the rehab of an existing owner occupied home.
So I think we did something where it was like $10,000 that we did, one sort of years ago? Yeah, like five or six years ago, I thought.
That would have been your Carroll Down King Assistance, you went for 10, you did 11. So we got you one more on your match. We closed that one a couple of years ago.
Okay. So then who keeps track of the money? Does it go to Region 12, or does it go to the city?
It sits at the city until we spend that money in individual rehabs, and then you're billed for that match money.
Billed for it, okay.
So over at three, if you were awarded later this year, we would really be starting to sign contracts about this time next year with all the homeowners.
Okay.
And then as the construction goes, and then it's without.
So you got four in the works?
I have four verified, and I have five more Tier Twos. So when I ran the numbers through the different scoring categories, I think five projects is your best.
Five total? Five total?
Mm-hmm. And if we find-
What about the other four that are in the Tier Two?
Well, if they can get their paperwork in in a timely manner, I'll go right after those four projects.
So, we could add nine projects?
You could. I've also expanded target areas. If I have a year left in the program, I'll go see who is on the border of a target area, and I'll go after them.
Yes, okay.
I try to get as much as I can out of each application because there are a lot of them.
Yeah.
Carla, it's not written in our report here. Was it a hundred and eighty-some thousand dollars you said that you're going after?
Right, there's thirty-seven thousand, five hundred per project from CDBG funds. That covers your basic rehab, your lead-based rehab, and your technical fees for your inspector. So, at five projects, that's a hundred and eighty-seven thousand, five hundred put into those areas of the city.
So, you need, Laura, you need a, or Carla, you need a number from us? One thousand, fifteen hundred, two thousand? Is that what you're looking for?
Correct.
Okay.
Just tell me, Tier Two is basically just a waiting list?
It means that you didn't get your application in by the deadline.
But they did apply.
They have their, those five people are in different stages of continuing their application information. Some people, it takes a little longer to get the information in.
Is there a deadline on that, then?
There was, because I don't think it's fair to people that get all around not to get in. So, we put them on what's called the waiting list, and then they'll still ask for their financials prior to the application. If we get them, they can be deemed an eligible participant according to the grant of application.
So, if they don't get it all in, would they be eligible the next year or the next time around?
They would be eligible as soon as we run through those first four projects.
Projects, okay.
Then I'll be calling them.
Okay.
Carla, I should know, so if we go in and apply for five, and let's say we can add a sixth or seventh, does that increase, if we say two thousand for a project and we add two more, is that increasing ours, or is it just on the ones we're awarded?
It's just on the ones you're awarded. I have yet to ask a city for additional funds for their additional projects. I call them the bonuses. Anything else?
Will there be a difference in our scoring if we stay at the low end of the thousand per versus the upper end of the two thousand per?
That's up to the scores. Without it, I kind of miss the old rules because you knew exactly how much money you needed for each town to get a certain score. This is more arbitrary with other factors in. I feel a strong show of support. If I can have Auburn give two thousand a project, maybe Carroll should too. But, you know, I have other small towns that only gave five hundred. It's just all over the board.
Hey. There's this one coming up.
It'll probably come out of general fund reserves, but ultimately, we'll have to do a bunch of them later in the year.
Mike, what are you anticipating the sources you're working with, what they may chip in, contribute?
It's a smaller amount.
So?
I mean, it's probably more token amount.
Sure, sure.
It's nice to have numerous entities show their support for projects.
What types of entities?
I've seen everything from the fire department to the garden club to economic development to banks, the co-op sometimes, the REC sometimes. It's really town-specific and which entity feels strongly about supporting their community housing. So, it's different in every town, sir.
Any other questions for Carla?
Just to clarify, the match that we give is only for the set number, say five?
Correct.
After, okay.
To date-
We're not going to go above five times whatever amount we do per-
To date, I have not had to provide any additional city match for additional projects.
Thank you.
If we did five, if you did thousand, it's five thousand we have to do from there so far.
Considering our commitment with the urban revitalization and keeping the bat, and the amount of twenty-eighty-seven, I think the two thousand would be a good investment.
I was just going to say the same thing. We do it.
Oh, this is scary.
If we're committed to this, let's go after it.
Well, this is our goal to help things improve, our housing stock improve.
We made that a commitment a while back.
I have no problem with the two thousand, especially when it's capped at five units, and you know we're not just an escalator.
I was thinking fifteen hundred, but under the same auspices that we committed to that. But, you know, the rehab project, and, but, that's okay.
Enhance the neighborhood.
You're talking a hundred and eighty-seven thousand dollars in a few homes, isn't it?
On ten thousand dollars, yeah.
That's going to fix up, that's going to fix up some stuff.
I'm also excited to see what you can do to stretch things.
Did you ever set your high at thirty-eight-hundred?
Yes, I said.
And what year was that?
That was in 2017, and they were my highest scoring application. Although, there's seven different scoring criteria, so there's numerous factors involved. But I think over the years showing that a good show of community support financially does help your application. And you're headed in that direction with that number.
I'm all right with that amount then.
Any other, anything else? I'm, I'm, whatever, yeah, I'm just-
Just to be, basically, an additional five thousand dollars in what you kind of think and do. It's a small investment.
Pretty well, try and get a hundred and eighty-seven thousand.
Sure. Nope, all right. Like you said, I was thinking the same thing. I mean, if we're committed to the urban development, I mean, it's, so. Anything else? If not, I'll need a motion to approve city match funds in the amount of two thousand dollars per project for the 2019 Community Development Block Grant, Owner Occupied Housing Rehab Grant. So, okay.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. If there's no other discussion, we'll go ahead and vote.
Cox?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Do you, Laura, do you need to send her a letter then with all that information, or, you know? Anything official, or?
Yep.
Okay.
Okay, yep.
Thank you, Carla.
Yep, like we said, there's more things that'll take place at the April 22 meeting, which is right before the grant deadline. So, we wanted to get this discussion kind of taken care of and all done. And then the rest of the stuff will be coming.
Thanks, thanks again, Carla.
Yeah, thank you.
Let's see. Our next item is Reports, and it's the police vehicle purchase.
Thank you.
And Brad, sorry.
Thank you. On March 1st, we received bids for a four-wheel drive or all-wheel-drive sport utility vehicle for the police department. And there were going to be nineteen or twenty-year models. As Ford and Dodge had different model years out at the time. This year, both companies have offered different motors, which is kind of a new thing. It was pretty standard in the past, now some changes have been made. And the bids that were received only were from Dodge and from Ford. Chevy, which motor in, did not submit a bid again this year. The dealerships have made some recommendations, and after reviewing those recommendations, my recommendation is to purchase the hybrid vehicle from Ford. And the reason for this is that it's estimated to save about twenty-two-hundred dollars per year in fuel cost. The lifespan of the vehicle will be five years, so savings about eleven thousand dollars in fuel cost over the five-year lifespan of the vehicle. And see how it goes in the future. We could be changing to more of these, so more fuel cost savings. The hybrid came in a little bit higher cost, which is a little bit above our budget, but we should be able to make up that difference with our crime prevention and police forfeiture if needed. The Durango also had some other issues, such as a center column shifter, which is where all of our equipment goes in the vehicle. So, this provides or presents a little bit of a challenge for us for putting radios, radar equipment, lighting equipment, stuff in the middle of vehicles also. My recommendation is to purchase the Ford 2020 Ford Interseparate Utility Hybrid model for a cost of thirty-six thousand, nine hundred and sixty-two dollars. And delivery won't be till after July 1, as this is in the next year's budget.
Do we have any cars left, Brad?
We do not.
Just all?
All SUVs.
And this one will be all-wheel drive?
All-wheel drive.
All-wheel drive. Do they have any trouble getting around on the streets in the winter?
We have not, no. The last blizzard that we had, they did very well.
How much is your vehicle's idle time?
About forty-nine percent.
So, if you're idling, you have your engine running?
Correct.
Summertime, you have your engine running with air conditioning, idling fifty percent of the time?
That sounds about right. Yeah, that's me from traffic stops to car accidents to any just idle time at stoplights. The engine, the engine hours computes both ways, its total engine hours and idle time in the vehicles.
Idle time might be sitting there doing a radar gun.
It's possible, yeah, it's possible.
And when it's our idle time with the hybrid, the engine's off?
The engine will be off.
Will that engine recharge the batteries going down the road, or you got to do it?
No, it recharges itself. It's very similar to a Prius, how it charges with the braking system. Also has a type, some type of generator in there that's recharging the batteries also.
I don't know if that's also factored in, but I believe you also, oil changes are less frequent.
Yeah, I'm not sure. We didn't get into the specifications into that, I guess.
Well, I think they are because of the idle time.
Idle time is less.
The motor doesn't run, you know, when you're driving, there are times when the motor's actually not running, so.
Your idle time doesn't create mileage, you just use it to-
No, when you're driving, it also shut up. The engine's shut off at times when you drive. So, I mean, the specs for oil changes are higher, like ten thou- How often do you change the oil on vehicles now?
Every month.
Just, but how many miles?
Anyone varies, yeah, it could be a thousand. We do the K-9 car, and sergeant's vehicle gets less because it does have less operating time on it. So, those get changed every other month.
So, you don't go by miles, you go by time?
We go by time, yes.
So, you realistically to, you could go two months on this thing?
It's a possibility, yeah. I'll do some more research on that, because I just don't know a good answer on that. But if we definitely kind of would.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt, but if you look at the specs of the vehicle, you'll probably find that the oil, recommendation of oil changes is higher than a non-hybrid vehicle because there are times when you're driving and you're going off electricity.
Engine motor is.
So, the engine doesn't run as often.
Correct.
So.
Yeah, you should be able to theoretically extend that.
It's probably a plus.
And I know on my Prius, it's ten months or ten thousand miles.
For oil change? And so, I have, that's why I ask, because I have a hybrid vehicle too. And I would say the same thing. I would say I save a significant amount of money.
And if we're, we do it monthly, so if we can push it back to every other month, then of course, there's some savings there.
And you have one, right?
I have OCD, though, so I changed mine to five thousand just because I can't-
You do anyway?
I just can't do ten thousand, I just, and I break out highs. And honestly, at this point, if my car has enough miles, then I'd be doing it. So, I'm with you.
Hey, Brad?
Yes.
Do you know of anybody that has a hybrid now?
As far as patrol car? This will be the first model year that Ford's offering them. I do know that Iowa City just ordered at least six, and there's some other agencies across the state that are very interested in making orders too. So, we won't be the first to order, but we'll probably all receive them at the same time.
Okay, because my, I guess my biggest concern is if the engine's not running when you're sitting there idle with all the electronics and everything else, is there, is any of the heavier battery systems in there?
I asked Ford about that, and they said these are specifically manufactured for police, so that they're expecting that draw with the batteries anyway. And they, he's saying to me that that shouldn't be an issue at all.
Mike, is there anything like my car and Mike's car? There's sensors too that, and there's an indicator on the dash that shows. And if it gets to a certain level, it will start itself back up, and that charging system will bring it back up.
And all of our, all of our lighting system's now LED, so it's got a low draw anyway. The spot I can see it being the most is car accident. We're sitting on the side road for half hour to forty-five minutes with the lights on. But the LEDs drawing such a low number of voltage now that it shouldn't be a major issue, but the motor would kick in and charge itself back up if needed.
And I would say with my vehicle, what I experience, if it's just sitting there, every five minutes it probably kicks on, on for a minute, and then kicks off. And so, just to what Jeff says, it regulates itself.
What do we have, all Fords? We do.
In the fleet now?
Yes.
The one concern, I'm comfortable with trying this once, but I'm concerned a little bit about the trade-in value is not necessarily going to be as good as a regular vehicle. Because when you, when we want to trade that out, somebody's going to have to trust that battery system to be working. So, you're going to lose some of that fuel savings. I have a feeling that we will see that it won't trade back as well. Yeah, it's going to depreciate a little higher than, you know, because of that. Who wants, who wants to trust a battery?
What mileage do we trade at about?
Right, at about a hundred thousand is pretty, pretty average.
And those are usually, do you know what the battery warranty is?
I do not, no.
Okay.
I know that the vehicle has a three-year, thirty-six thousand on the motor and all the rest of it. So, or the motor, the power source.
What I was, you get at the Fords, you got all Fords, and you throw a different brand in there. Now, will this hybrid have the dash and everything similar to what you have now?
The pictures I've seen looks very similar to what we have.
So, if an officer's in a panic and he jumps into a different brand of vehicle, is that a problem?
It could, it could present a little bit of an issue. Just basically, stuff is in different locations, so. But yeah, the Fords, the picture from this one looks very similar to the current Fords that we have now.
Well, I'm guessing, you said, because it's a column shift, it'll have to be quite different than the other ones.
That would be the, that's the Dodge that has that.
That's what I mean.
Yeah.
No, the Dodge has the shifter down here, and that was going to cause a conflict.
Yeah, that's in the center, in the center house.
That's what I'm saying. If you go to the Dodge, then your interior proximity of things is going to be way different than here.
Yeah, we'd have to redesign how we put our equipment now.
So, if an officer's in a panic, that could be important.
It could, yes.
Beyond that, will your equipment fit into this vehicle? Or no, this is an additional.
This will be an additional. But every car, the Fords, we look at the spec sizes, they're all very similar, and so, everything transfers over now currently. Now, if we switch from Dodge to Ford, it's possible, I just don't know.
So, back to the same thing that Councilman Dirks brought up, not only the controls of the vehicle, but where the, your equipment, your-
That's what I was getting, yeah.
Interacts in place, right?
That's what I was worried about more than the controls of the equipment. Because it'd be here, and all of a sudden, it may be like here. You know, in a panic, that can be important.
Yeah, definitely can, definitely could cost them issues if you're not used to the vehicle.
How much over budget are we in this, Brad?
We budgeted thirty-one, four, thirty-six, so just about five, a little over five thousand dollars.
But from here going forward, those will probably all be the same.
Well, I, yeah, I projected the similar motor that we have now, like, was still above our budget too. So, their cost went up at some point, higher than I expected.
What motor are you running now?
It's a three-point liter, three-point-three-liter V-six Ford.
But this is a new model either. I mean, they may change, if I understand correctly.
Yes. They did, it sounds like they, we got our 2019 model in time, but I know the Sheriff's Department did not. And they actually got notification that they weren't going to be able to get one, because they had stopped production of 19s midway through, and they started production of 20s, or changing their manufacturing plant for production of 20s. So, they ended up canceling about, like, fifteen or twenty thousand orders nationwide.
Hey, Brad, I see this is Sterling Gray. Is this another unmarked?
No, this is, it just comes, when they put the specs together, they just throw the colors in there. So, it'll be another marked vehicle. We just have it, when we go make the order, then they place the color for it.
Not only would I not see Roy, but I wouldn't hear him either.
Could be a good thing.
He always seems to find me.
Do you know if this hybrid engine's been utilized by Ford in any other places in previous years?
Not the specific one. They are going to be putting it in the 2020 F-150s also. They've had some hybrids. They had it in a Ford Fusion, Lincoln MKZ. And I believe you told me the Expedition had it also at one point. But it wasn't this specific, exact motor.
But this, this motor has some lineage, it's been around and evolved a little bit.
I, I think it's evolved- I, I think it's evolved, you know, the, the Fusion, of course, is a little bit, I'm assuming a smaller motor than this one will be. Uh, but they do, they have some history with, with the, uh, hybrid motors. And they're trusting enough that they're gonna put it in the F-one-fifties, which I think is a pretty popular vehicle, at least you see on the roads.
Mine's a Ford, nine years old, still, battery's fine.
One thing, I, when I bought mine, I had a concern about the batteries too, because I think a new battery pack is at least five thousand dollars. And the Priuses have been out since the early two thousands and Motor Inn told me they'd only replace two in eighteen years, so.
And, and this is actually my second Prius.
My two.
It's a, it comes with a hundred thousand mile warranty. My car now has about a hundred and thirty-five thousand. I've not had any issues with the, the battery itself at all.
Sounds like you need to get your Prius chief.
Save some costs there. Yeah, I did drive one once and I, it was a little difficult to figure out how to start it, so.
I'm gonna have to, I'm gonna have to shoot one people in the back, I don't know. I guess I'm going to, uh, agree that our chief of police is involved in this all the time. And he's recommending this for his fleet. I guess that has some importance to me.
Well, he's done his homework, I think, it was all pretty well spelled out there.
Mm-hmm.
This could, well, th- this is our future. This is our future. We'll have to watch this to see how the numbers do come out in the end and.
Yeah, when we come back to order next year, we'll definitely be evaluating to see, did it really save us the fuel costs? Of course, the emission savings also, if you want to stay green, it's pretty important too.
Well, and then the resale or the trade value later on too. It'll be interesting to see.
Yeah, we'll see how that all plays out.
Could've had a Hemi.
Could still.
I would go with hybrid.
At the, if we leaned towards the Dodge, the Hemi would've been my recommendation. I've got good history to that issue though. I, I'm also concerned with the safety and functionality of the vehicle for the officers.
Yeah, it could present a little bit of a challenge. We don't know how that would set up. We've seen pictures and looked at different Dodges, but once you actually start placing your items in there, we just weren't sure how it was gonna lay out.
We know, of course, we know it's doable, but it's different from what we use.
Of course.
They're a little cramped on those trooper cars.
With the chargers?
Yeah, because they have those and I've sent some of those. They're a little, little narrow. Not, I, I just know that. Yeah, that came out right.
Front seat or back there, Doc?
Headline, world.
Mayor spends a lot of time in the back of troopers.
Not only in the back, I was up front.
Aquatic license.
So what do we need here? We need a motion. Yep, we need a motion to, uh, purchase one two thousand twenty Ford police, uh, utility hybrid vehicle as specified with a delivery date to end of July first, two thousand nineteen, for thirty-six thousand nine hundred and sixty-two dollars from Champion Ford.
So, second.
I have a motion in a second. If there's no other discussion, we'll go and vote, please.
Haley?
Yes.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
Motion is approved.
Thank you. Uh, I trust everyone's read the committee reports, uh, monthly activity reports that have come out. Um, I have no comments this evening. Are there any comments from the council? Any comments from the manager? If not, I need a motion to adjourn.
Make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, uh, to adjourn in a second, and we'll go and vote.
Fluschner?
Yes.
Dirks?
Yes.
Haley?
Yes.
Seaman?
Yes.
Cox?
Yes.
Base?
Yes.
You are adjourned.
I think of that, in that group, that was the only one that wanted an increase, correct?
Yes, that is correct.
So where would that money come from if we had to go that far?
If council chooses to go to the request, it would come out of general fund balance.
Is this general fund balance?
We may have to get an increase in the levy.
I just, those are questions I think that would be, I, I would ask that of them, you know, what, what is it that, that's an extra five thousand dollars, but I'm not. I wasn't seeing how, other than to zero out their balance at the end.
Yeah, well, it shows the rent going out from eighteen to nineteen, a thousand, from eleven to twelve, but in the cover letter from Roxy and, and Summer, it says this request is the increase we have incurred in our rent since our relocation in two thousand sixteen. So I think they're trying to catch up. You know what I'm saying? By a hundred percent is a lot.
Yeah.
And I don't know, that's a kind of precedent.
Is that not, no, I think about that, I think that we did increase it for their rent, because they had moved a couple of years ago.
Right, they, yeah, because of flooding down.
Three, I think it was like three thousand, we went to five.
That's exactly what happened.
Yes.
Yeah, yeah.
And Laura, just to clarify, the numbers in here, the, off to the right, under the twenty, those are just numbers that you guys brought in that were given to them last year. The only one that's different is the proposal for the food pantry, but nobody asked for anything additional. This is just what we paid them last year, so we just pulled it across. So let's pay that again this year.
That's what they requested.
So they did request the same amount that every one of these people issued.
Yes. Yes.
We don't just.
Well, I just wasn't sure exactly and I might have missed, uh, an attachment of the requests. Um, it's been a crazy couple days for me, so. I just was curious. I was even looking at like the daycare center one, um, obviously all my kids went there, but Mike and I were just chatting, I was thinking that one was for a bolster in paying their employees and I just wondered if you knew or you knew, like, have they, have they been able to do so, um, you know?
A little more so because she's on the board.
Has employee retention improved?
Right. Well, I'm not sure, but it does seem like every time I go to a board meeting, it seems like they're, they're constantly hiring. So have they been able to retain, I don't know if it's gotten better or not. Salaries, they're still not great, you know, so to speak, for what I would consider the type of work that they do. I, I think it takes a very special person to be able to be in a daycare setting, working with children all day long, you know, even teachers. I totally agree, and that's why I'm asking. I mean, if we gave them this money, just some of this was extra money to, to, to bring some wages up, to get some people to stay and to get some good people in, did they do that? Probably not to a level that's gonna give, you know, a, a lot of them, a lot of them to stay type of thing. I think one of their biggest struggles also is not able to offer some benefits that corporate America can offer. Um, they currently don't offer health insurance and I know this has been something the board has been talking about. Um, and hopefully in the future it maybe could be offered. They recently, I would say within the last five years or so, did offer being able to participate in, um, like a Roth IRA set aside where before they never were doing that. They got a few, I'm guessing maybe a handful of employees to participate. But I think health insurance right now, I know they're losing some, what they would, what the director would call quality employees leave because, you know, they are hired young, right out of high school, right out of high schools, excuse me, right out of college. They could still stay on mom and dad's health plan. Right. Then they age out of that and then they have to go find something and the daycare's not offering it, so.
Do you look around the area and the pay scales that are being offered now or?
Oh, I know.
It entice them away, yeah.
Well, especially if there's healthcare involved. I totally get it. I, I mean.
It's a little bit of a struggle we have, like at the aquatic center, and I would probably guess we're paying our lifeguards to probably pretty comfortably what a daycare worker does.
Yes, you are.
And we're competing against Walmart in some cases.
And McDonald's.